Gentleman.
Go for it, Sean.
How are you tonight?
How are you?
Good evening.
Good. Jay, I thought you were down in the Caribbean. That's what we've heard.
I wish.
Came back specifically for the meeting.
I like the chill.
You got it today.
Yeah, I hear it's chilly, yeah. Although it's not very warm down here today, if you'll make you feel any better.
Yeah, just a little.
Okay. What time do we have? Are we at 6 o'clock yet?
Yep, we're good.
We're ready.
Okay, very good. One second here. Okay, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
Good evening. Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Yama Zoning Board of Appeals. Today's date is January 9th, 2025. We have six matters on our agenda tonight. My name is Sean Igoe. I am the chairman. And the first matter, we're actually going to go out of order because we have one that's going to be a continued matter, and that is petition 5144, Alfredo and Janelle Lopelato, property location 21 television lane, West Jamath, Mass. Is anybody here on that matter? Raise your hand. Anybody here, Dolores, on that matter?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. They're seeking a special permit to increase the ridge height of a nonconforming structure. They're requesting a continuance to the February 13th date. They have signed an extension, amended application, to request additional relief. They're waiting for a stamped plan, that's my understanding. Does anybody have any, on the board, does anyone have any questions on?
Just whether or not, is there space on the February 13th that they're requesting for?
That would be a good question. Dolores, how many do we have on for that evening?
Yep, they can fit on that.
How many do we have right now?
Including them, we have five.
Yeah. Okay, all right. Anybody have any questions regarding the request for continuance?
I'd be glad to make a motion to grant a continuance.
To February 13th?
Yes.
Now, second.
Okay. Got a second? Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously, that matter is continued until February 13th. The next matter on our petition is petition 5151, Christopher M. Roberts and Linda M. Roberts, trustees of 12 Town Brook Road Realty Trust, property location at 12th Town Brook Road, West Jamath, Mass. It's in an R-25 zoning district. The applicant seeks a special permit per section 407 to create an accessory apartment on the second floor of a proposed garage. We have the petitioner here.
You are giving us...
What are you giving us, sir?
Okay, Sean, he's handing out floor plans for the apartment, for the, yeah, for the, what will be the apartment. So I'll stamp it and give it to Dolores.
Okay. Now, is that different from the floor plan that I have that was submitted?
Is it different?
I'm not exactly sure.
Hold on a second. Let's, let's back up here a second.
Okay.
Could you please identify yourself for the record, sir?
Yes, thank you. My name's Don Bracken. I'm a professional engineer and surveyor with Bracken Engineering, representing the applicants, Christopher and Linda Roberts.
And where are they tonight?
Linda Roberts is online and can be available.
She'll be available for questions. Okay. And you have permission to speak on their behalf, I presume?
Yes, I do. On the application, I'm listed as the agent with the owner's signature.
Okay, okay. All right. So you submitted a, is this an amended floor plan, or is this thing?
I don't, I don't think so. I think what happened when my office submitted the full set of architectural plans, the plans may have shown the space where the apartment is going as unfinished. When I was getting ready for the meeting, I wasn't 100% sure which plan you had, so I just handed out a floor plan of the proposed one-bedroom apartment.
Okay. All right. Well, I don't have that, but I'll presume that they have it, and we'll go from there. Okay, why don't you tell us what you want to do? I think it's pretty self-explanatory, but go ahead.
Yes, thank you. We're applying for a special permit under section 407 in order to construct a 630 square foot, one-bedroom apartment over an existing, oh, I'm sorry, over a proposed three-car garage. I have the plan up in front of everybody. On the plan, the proposed garage is shown in purple. Right now, on the site, there's an existing foundation highlighted in yellow that a building permit was issued for. There was no activity, it wasn't followed through, so they're currently in the process of reapplying for the permit for that proposed single-family dwelling, which is going to be two bedrooms. So we're going to have a total of three bedrooms on the site. We do have a septic permit that was issued last year for both the two-bedroom main house and the one-bedroom accessory apartment. Site's also serviced by Town Water. The proposed garage with the apartment meets all zoning setback requirements and lot coverage requirements. In accordance with the bylaw, the entrance to the garage apartment does not come from the front of the building, but from the back. And from the back, there's two access points for egress requirements. We think that the architectural plans have been drawn and prepared to make it look like the apartment is subordinate to the main house. As you can see, it's, it's about, looks like a half a story from the front. The only portion of the apartment that you're going to see is the small shed dormer facing the road. It has a full dormer on the back of the, of the back of the proposed structure. We meet the zoning bylaw by being less than 800 square feet maximum. This will be an owner-occupied, family-type unit. The bylaw requires three parking spaces for that use, and we're proposing four parking spaces. Other than that, I think we meet all the requirements of the bylaw, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. A couple things here. The first issue I have is we, we issued a special permit in 2021 for a single-story, two-bedroom, single-bath ranch. You now have a different plan that you're submitting. Well, actually, you're not even submitting it. You're just asking for the ADU. You're not asking for approval of your plan. First problem I have is you don't have a primary structure that has an occupancy permit. So I don't know how we give you a special permit or an accessory dwelling unit when you don't have a primary unit. So that's the first one. The second issue I have is, in my judgment, I think your special permit has expired from the 2021. I don't think that it's been acted on in time, but I would probably defer to the building department and get a written recommendation as far as that's concerned. I would suggest that we granted a special permit for a single-family ranch. I think you need to, at the very least, modify that special permit by coming back and asking that you be allowed to build this new structure that you want to build. And I would need to see a landscape plan as well, which I don't see a landscape plan. Thirdly, you say you have a three-car garage. The bylaw doesn't say three-car garage. I think it says for three cars or more. Let me just check something here. And I would suggest to you that the size of those garages will hold much more than three cars. The one on the left is 38 feet deep. I think you could probably fit at least 10 cars in those garages, the today's cars, the size they are.
Sean, the bylaw right now says...
So I have a problem with the size. Excuse me?
The bylaw right now is probably, it says two and two, is just for what you wanted, if that's what you wanted to know.
I'm sorry, Jay?
The bylaw right now is, is requiring two off-street parking spaces for the accessory apartment and two for the house, so it'd be four.
No, I'm talking about the garage.
Understood, understood. I'm just bringing up the other.
Yeah. We could get to that in just a moment, but I don't even see where the parking, well, I'm sure you could probably get the parking in there for the two and the two. But you're looking for, I think you're going to need a special permit for that garage that you want to put there, because I think it clearly is going to hold more than three cars. Lastly, I think you're going to have to demonstrate that there's going to be no undue hazards, nuisance, or congestion by doing the proposal that you're suggesting on that particular lot. And I'm not sure how familiar you are with that particular lot, but that roadway right there is very, very busy. So those are some concerns that I have right now. And so what I'm going to, is, does anybody else not share my concerns on the board?
No, I would agree with you. The permit, original special permit, doesn't define what's their, what they're proposing, so it seems to be, needs modification at minimum.
Well, I have the building permit in front of me, the original building permit, and that's for, that's for a single-story ranch. You know, I, as far as the house is concerned, I'm looking at the layout of this house, and I think it's kind of stretching the imagination that it's only a two-bedroom house. I mean, you've got libraries that are adjacent to bathrooms, you've got walk-in closets upstairs that are the size of bedrooms. You've got one huge bedroom at the top of the house. How many people are proposed to live in this house, the primary residence, sir?
Before I answer that question, can I go back and address your other points, and then we'll get?
Well, why don't we, why don't we finish this question first? How many people are going to be living in that house?
I mean, I honestly can't tell you. I know that it's an older couple with grown children, so it could be two, four, or whatever, but I would assume, you know, anything could change in the future as well, you know, after it's built. So, right now, I would say that the...
Well, actually, anything couldn't change in the future because it's got to be the primary residence of the petitioner.
I mean, I'm not referring to that. I'm referring to how many people physically would be in the house at any one time.
She's on the, she's on the line. Why don't you ask her how many people are going to live in that house?
Linda, can you connect?
Yeah?
I'm Linda Roberts. I'm the owner.
Okay.
This is, we, my husband and I plan to retire from our positions in Nantucket in the next two to three years, and we'd like to move over there. We have two grown children that live out of state, and this would be our primary residence. And it was our hope that we could build a garage apartment to rent to possibly people that work at the elderly assisted living across the street.
Mm-hmm, okay. What, what is the purpose of such a big garage?
We don't own an RV, but we were thinking about purchasing an RV.
What is your physical address right now?
I live at 13 Milestone Crossing in Nantucket.
Do you vote over there in Nantucket?
I'm a lifelong native. So is my husband, generational. And I do vote here.
Okay.
But we have aging parents, and they've been over at Cape Cod Hospital quite a bit for treatments, as has my husband, and we wanted something on the mainland that would be close to the hospital.
Okay. Okay. Well, okay, we'll come, if that's all you have right now, thank you, ma'am. We'll probably come back to you if the board has any questions for you.
But I wanted to address the ranch permit. When we bought this, when we bought the property, it came with the building permits and the building plans, and we looked at the home, and it wasn't to our liking. And the quality of the materials that were going to be used wasn't to our liking, so we went to a designer, and he redesigned the home.
Okay.
And the person that we purchased it from was the one that took out the building permits, not us.
No, I realize that. We granted him a special permit in 2021. A building, a special permit is good for 24 months. The building permit was taken out in 2022 after it was granted a six-month extension. And I, you know, I'm not quite sure if it's substantially been acted upon just by putting a foundation in there.
That's all that's done?
Yeah, no, I know, but I'm just saying, as far as your special permit is concerned, I think you're going to, and I think you either need a new special permit to build this house, or you're going to need to modify the existing special permit with this plan. And you're not asking for that tonight. We can't...
No, we were just, we want to be able to job cost everything and have a builder come in and build everything at once, but we...
Oh, no, I understand that. I, no, I understand exactly what you want to do. That's the right way to do it. My, my point is, though, is all you've asked for tonight is for permission to build an ADU, an accessory.
Correct. Because if that isn't possible, then we're going to scrap the garage and just go for the house for now.
Well, I don't think we can grant you a special permit for an accessory dwelling unit unless you have an existing dwelling unit there.
Okay.
And I think that in order for you to put an existing dwelling here, you need to either modify the special permit that was granted in 2021, that would be an application to modify that one, or you need to ask for a new special permit. I don't know exactly the history here, and I would like some information from the building commissioner. But one might suggest or argue that your special permit has lapsed, and so you need to get a new one. But at the very least, I think you're going to need to at least modify the existing special permit. And other things I think you're going to need is you're going to need a, there's supposed to be affidavits submitted with this as well, that you swear under oath that this is going to be your primary residence.
Okay.
I have to see those in the file. And once again, I think the size of this garage and what the bylaw says is more than three cars. I think you can clearly get more than three cars in this garage. So it's not the number of doors, it's what you can put in the garage, how many cars. So I think you're going to need a special permit for that as well. But before we do anything else, what I'd like to do is I'd like to go and hear from the rest of the board members to see if they have any questions.
Thank you.
Okay. Dick, do you have any questions for the petitioner?
Not really. I think I recognize what you're saying about coming back for a new one is probably in order here. I, you know, it's, it's a lot nicer property than what had been approved before, actually. I don't, I'm not sure, unless there's smart cars or something, I don't think you'll get more than two cars in the 38-foot depth of the big garage, which I think you're talking about doing for, for a camper. You know, it's, I don't have any real problems with that, I mean, other than the problem I always have with these things, the ADUs, where, where we're essentially making duplexes out of what would normally be single-family lots. And, but town has spoken on that, so so be it. And, but I don't have any other questions that I can, I can think of. I don't have any real problems with it, other than the fact of what you're determining or that relevant to the logistics of special permits.
Okay. Jay?
I don't have anything. I think you've covered everything pretty extensively, so I think it obviously needs to be brought back in a different form, at least it's a new special permit or whatever.
Okay. John?
Yeah, I'd agree. I don't have anything additional, but I would agree with Jay.
Oh, Anthony?
Yeah, I confirm the same understanding of how we have to apply and what's necessary here. So I agree with everyone here.
Okay. Well, okay, so I think we need a few things here. I think what you're going to have to do is go back and amend your petition. I think you're going to ask, have to ask for relief for that garage. I think you're going to have to ask for a modification of the 2021 special permit, or you're going to need a new special permit. You may want to talk to the building commissioner about that. And as far as the ADU is concerned, you're going to need affidavits from the owners. And now, ma'am, I heard you say in two to three years, you and your husband are going to move into this place. Are you going to leave this unoccupied until then?
I was going to rent the ADU unit to somebody that works over there, because I don't want to leave it empty, and we hope to spend weekends there.
Well, it has to be your primary residence.
Well, we can't retire from our job yet.
Well, unfortunately, you don't meet the criteria of the bylaw unless you're living there. You can't rent it.
Okay.
So I just, I want to make sure everybody's clear, because we're very strict about this. So we're willing to hear your petitions if you want to come back, but we're going to hold you to this. And also, I think we're going to need to put some type of a restriction on the number of people that could live in the main house, too. I would suggest that we'd be restricting that to probably, well, it's a big house, but the way you've got it laid out with only two bedrooms, you've got two bedrooms and three full baths, which is a little odd. Why do you need three full baths for two bedrooms?
Well, I have that in my house right now.
Okay. Well, I always say you can never have too many bathrooms, so I'm not going to argue that point.
And it's just my husband and I. We enjoy it.
Okay, okay. Well, what you're going to have to, we're, we're not going to be able to continue this for you, because we can't continue something that's not complete, so...
Okay, we'll come back.
What I would suggest is that you request a withdrawal without prejudice, which I think we'll grant you, which means you can come back anytime and go back and redo your permit application, your petition, and resubmit it.
Can, can I please ask some questions before we get to that decision?
Certainly, yeah.
I tried to write down some of your concerns, but a couple of points and a couple of questions. You know, the first one is the, the number of cars within a garage. You referred to a zoning bylaw. I'm not familiar with the zoning bylaw. It's not, there's nothing in section 407 related to how many, how many cars in the garage.
Let me, let me find it for you. Dolores, you just sent that to me. Where is that?
I believe it's a, it's a note, Mr. Chairman, on page 23 of the bylaw.
Page 23. Hold on one second.
Footnote number five.
Let's go to the bylaw. Okay. Navigating these bylaws can sometimes be a little difficult.
Might be footnote number five.
Even those, even those of us who look in it all the time still...
Sean, I think it's footnote number five you're looking for.
Yeah, that's footnote number five on section 203, is it 203, 202.5, footnote five. You need a special permit for garage space for or storage of more than three vehicles. And I can't say how the others on the board feel about that, but I would not be in support of that proposal right now as only having three vehicles in it. Your, one of the garages is 30 feet, two of the garages is 30 feet deep, the other one's 38 feet deep. Your average car right now is probably about eight feet long, maybe 10. So you can certainly get more than three vehicles in those garages, so you'd need a special permit for that as well.
Well, that's certainly something we can take a look at, maybe make a portion of its storage, put a wall up or something like that. But I think what we'd like to do is be able to take the import and take a look at how we can change the plans as they're submitted and ask for a continuance rather than a withdrawal, but that...
Well, the problem is, we can't give you a continuance because you need to amend your petition. You can't come back on a continuance with an amended petition, because it has to be re-advertized.
Well, that, well, it wasn't, well, I, I, I think perhaps there's a way to revise the application so it still falls within the description on the advertisement. I know what you're saying about the special permit, but I think we would like an opportunity to talk to the building department or inspector to get his confirmation that the special permit has lapsed. I know, in my experience in other towns, the foundation going in and being certified, in some cases, can satisfy the beginning of construction for a special permit. I think, as we all know, special permits expire in two years, but in most instances, or a lot of instances, it's not completed by, within the two years, as long as it's being continued on. And I think the applicants have made a lot of effort since they've bought it to try to change the plans, update the plans, and they've been active with the, with the permits and working with the building department and applying for a septic permit and so forth. The other thing I was going to ask, you know, we did sit down with the building department and reviewed our application, you know, for completeness, and it was never brought up about the affidavits, and I'm not sure if it's standard practice to have the affidavits submitted with the application. It seems to me that that could be something that could be part of the conditions.
Did you read section 407, sir, before you submitted your application?
Yes, we did, yeah. I don't recall seeing that that had to be done. And it specifically, I think, says, "No permit shall be issued for it until that's done." Building permit. Doesn't say about the special permit.
Well, you're going to need, first off, I think you're going to need a special permit for that garage. Now, if it were to come to a vote tonight, I would not vote to support that building that you want to call an ADU, okay, with the garages below. I'd be a no vote.
We're, we're just asking for a continuance, yeah.
If you would like, I can poll the board right now to see if they feel the same way, that you're going to need a special permit for those garages.
I think if we had time to investigate and talk with the building inspector, then we could always withdraw afterwards. I'm just asking for a continuance so we don't have to start the whole process over again.
Well, this, this is, let me tell you how this works. You go into the building department, and you fill out an application for a building permit. and you fill out an application for a building permit. He tells you, I can't give it to you, because you're violating bylaws. You have to come to the Board of Appeals. It doesn't go backwards. You go from the building department to us. It doesn't go back to him. He, he doesn't have the final say, unless he wants to issue you a building permit.
I'm, I'm talking about just clarification from him. But I don't want to be argumentative, so I'm just.
No, that's fine. Well, you're before us tonight, okay? You're asking for an ADU. That's what you have before us tonight. I don't think you can amend a petition. So if you're not, if you think you're gonna go back and clarify whether you need all this stuff or not, let's say that he says you don't. Then what are you gonna, come back and ask for the ADU?
Well, the, the point would be keeping this permit alive and open and resolving the, all the issues that came up tonight, assuming that somehow, you know, we can resolve it without requiring modification of the original special permit.
Well, right now, what we have before us tonight, and the reason why I don't, I don't believe legally we can continue this, because I think you have to amend it, because I'm a no vote for the ADU. For one reason is, you don't have a principal structure there. And I'm not, I'm not gonna vote to approve an ADU on a principal structure that this board didn't agree to a special permit for. We gave a special permit for a single-story ranch.
Besides, besides a special permit aspect for any other project, I'm sure you're gonna get many projects submitted, or you have, where a proposed primary in, you know, a proposed ADU are being proposed at the same time. I would, I would guess that anyway.
That, that could be true.
So that, that wouldn't be no different, really, than what we're asking when you eliminate the special permit.
You haven't asked for that, sir.
You don't have a special permit to, or a building permit to move forward with the actual construction of the primary. So you're, the only thing in front of us is the ADU right now, so we don't have anything to base it to be an accessory to. It's the cart before the horse. If they come at the same time, that, we can understand that, we can visualize that, and there's a process to it. You're not there yet.
I'll leave it up to my client, Linda. I assume, Linda, that you want to withdraw without prejudice?
Yes, please.
Okay, we have a request to allow the petitioner to withdraw without prejudice. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. The petition is withdrawn without prejudice. If you wish to come back and see us after it's refiled, we'd more than happy to hear from you. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Good night.
Good night, now.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, the next matter up is petition 5152. Michael and Helen Cassels, doing businesses at Inn at Cape Cod LLC. The property is at Four Summer Street in Yarmouth Port. It's in an R40 zoning district. The applicant seeks to modify decision number 4063 dated August 16, 2006, and/or a special permit for 104.3.2, number four, subsection four, to increase the number of guest rooms. The applicant requests a waiver from the requirement for a certified site plot plan less than two years old. Good evening.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Could you identify yourselves for the record, please?
Right. Michael Cassels.
Ellen Cassels.
Good evening, folks. Could you tell us what you want to do? I think I got the gist of what you want to do, but tell us what you want to do.
We have a fine, iconic building, which we've had for 18 years, and we bought it as a nine-room inn in terrible condition, with the promise of, not from the town, but the way it was sold to us, returning it to the 13 rooms that it had always, always been from, from 1970, I think, through to the early 2000s, when two roofs failed. One of them was above room 10, and on the third floor was the devastating damage. There were two rooms up there. All the rooms had connecting bathrooms. Indeed, they were there in evidence when we bought the property. We've spent 18 years bringing the inn to an extremely high level inside and outside, an enormous expenditure, and the crowning glory or the final hurdle is to reinstate these rooms that it's always had for, for 30, 40 years of its life, or maybe even longer. We couldn't find the, the records that far back. The only thing that has happened, really, is we realized that we have to come to you guys and ask for that permission. We've already spent $120,000 on the project upfront, these extra rooms, or they're not extra rooms, they, they were the original rooms. So we're really committed financially already. These works will not entail any change to the exterior of the building. We have the existing parking requirements, which we've, we've extended in our 18 years to put them all on the commercial side of the property, i.e., none of our butters will see these cars or hear these cars. They're actually on the side of the old Yarmouth Inn, huge car park that they have. So there's no structural work. It's always had 13 rooms. We're asking for 12 total. We've already, one of them is done. That was an enormous expenditure in itself. We, all our decisions have been based upon what is good for the property. We love Cape Cod. We like the historic side. It's a tremendous building, which has been neglected. We're not restoring it. We're bringing it over and beyond what it's ever looked like inside and outside. No expense spared, but we do need some return at long last on our investment. I don't know what else I can say. Yarmouth Port itself has lost six bed and breakfasts in our time, totaling in excess of 30 letting rooms. We have lots of Airbnbs in Yarmouth Port. I'm not sure if everybody realizes that. I don't know how many of them are legitimate or not. That is a real threat to anybody in our business. We need these extra rooms now to, to continue at the level we're at. Oh, yeah. This year alone, we increased the size of the septic system. We installed a new system, which would handle all the rooms in question. We also have built a balcony, tore a wing down, rebuilt it, raised the roof, new windows. The list of things goes on, and everybody who knows us in this business thinks we're utterly crazy, and I suppose we are, but we, we really love the property, and we think this is the least it deserves. And we're here very humbly to ask for your authorization, for your, your agreement to this. One, one thing I might add, there's reference to a decision in 2006 by the then-owner, decision 4063, Mr. Prunty.
Yep.
The reason for this meeting, we were the buyers, 3,000 miles away, and our due diligence had uncovered the fact that this magnificent property didn't have a license. So it did, as people learned later on, and it was put in the wrong folder. So this meeting principally stopped us pulling out of the deal, because we thought, hey, there's something fishy about this. It doesn't sound right. What's going on? And they didn't have permission to, to run the inn in the new owner's house that had been built. Anyway, long story short, we've read the notes over and over on this, and this is a guy who was flipping the property, who made short-term decisions in that respect, most of which have been ripped out and redone. Included in this, to give you an idea, he ran on our third floor, that's one below the attic, third floor, had two rooms. When he put the new roof on, any normal person would have said, hey, we'll develop, we'll put back these rooms, we'll reinstate them, that's where the future is. But no, he took the short route. He was installing heating for the floor below, and he ran all the ductwork across this 1,200 square feet of space. As a foreigner, I've never seen that before. But holes that people could fall through, that's what we, we had to do as well, which we didn't even mention, although we did mention. The heating system was gas central heating. It wasn't broken, but in order to develop this floor space and reinstate the rooms, we needed to install the, a heating system for the floor downstairs, so we could pull out these, these extensive pieces of ductwork. We did all that. Work started in '21, and this, they were replaced. So really, we're in a position. We've got plans drawn up. We're looking at two rooms, king suites, with bathrooms attached to each, which are a bathroom. We've, we've already done the demolition and, sorry. Oh, and it's got second egress by warrant of our wet sprinkler system throughout the inn. So everything, the building department seemed more than happy. The health department, now we've done the septic system. So really, we're, we're asking for your understanding to give this building, bring it back to, to a level it should be at on that third floor, and allow us to recoup some of our enormous outlay. And that, that's it.
Okay, thank you. I am actually, I do have the 2006 decision, and the members that were present that night, first one was me. I was the chairman that night when we approved that, so that's how far back I go. I'm dating myself. I, the history of this property, though, as I have reviewed this decision, back in the 70s, it was originally licensed for 13 rooms. I, I don't exactly remember all the facts, but when I read through it, it seems that you're right. They changed it into a mechanicals by eliminating those rooms, and they were only in here asking for nine rooms at the time. I have a couple questions for you. So you have, you have adequate parking for all 13 rooms. Is that correct?
Yes, correct. Oh, it's 12, we're, sorry, I beg your pardon. I think I might have misled you. It always had 13 rooms, but we're only after 12, so we have adequate parking existing for 12, and they're all on the old Yarmouth Inn side.
Okay, so you're looking for 12, you're looking to increase it from nine to 12?
Yeah.
Okay. And you have adequate parking for all the 12 guest rooms, correct?
Correct.
And the septic system is adequate to handle all those rooms?
Yes, it is.
Okay, all right. And you say you've undertaken some construction now?
We've done the demolition on the third floor, because it was dangerous. Bits of the ceiling were falling down from the attic above, so it's open to the rafters, which is the style we want to put back. So that's been done. It, it bears no resemblance to what it looked like even a year ago.
Okay. But if you do complete it, you have adequate egress and ingress, and you, you said you have a sprinkler system in there now as well?
Yes.
Okay, all right. That's all I have. Why don't we go to the board and see if the board members have any questions? Anthony, do you have any questions for the petitioner?
I, I don't. I'm not within the technical definition of a butter, but I'm around the corner from you guys, so I'm very familiar with your property and everything that you do. So I, I don't have any questions. I'm happy for you to have the concept that you're bringing forward and continue the good work you've been doing.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. John, do you have any questions for the petitioner or comments?
I have a quick question. It is a beautiful property. I was there the other day. The concern I have is the parking. You did say you have adequate parking. Here's my concern. When you're driving around on the old Yarmouth Inn side, there are 10 spots with the tree and all that sort, right? And then you said you've got additional parking on the driveway. Is that the turnaround in front of the?
Yeah. You know, the owner's house, as you were, if you're facing the owner's house and the inn sort of behind you, there are, well, it's marked for two spaces at the moment, but we've already seen we can make three spaces there. That would be 13 spaces. That would be one for us.
Okay, so then where do you, do you have employees?
Yeah.
Where would they park?
Well. Do we have employees?
Yes. Yeah.
On any given day, it's not a problem. If we're full in the peak season, we have a good relationship with the old Yarmouth Inn. They put cars in our car park for doos in the winter. We put cars, the girls just drive around.
And walk through.
And walk through. And there's a gap in the hedge in the, and they just walk straight through up the kitchen steps, and they're here. But it, in actual fact, it, we, we would like to be 100% full, day after day. We were probably six, seven years ago, and it's never a problem. It, it, I would move my car and put it in the old Yarmouth Inn side, or put it outside our house, rather than they don't have a space to park. But it, it doesn't happen.
And they come in, the girls come in, and half the guests have already gone out to an island, and they've gone out for the day. So there's, it just seems to roll around fine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so, but again, that circular in front of the building?
Yeah.
Where you would drop, or you, you're gonna use that as additional parking?
No, 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 no. Absolutely not. One of the things we did in conjunction with the fire department we got here.
That's my question.
We said everywhere I've been, you need access with your fire equipment. So we've made it a fire services lane. As you pull in one of our driveways, there's parking for 20 minutes to check in. We're not, we don't enforce it to 20 minutes, but people then move on and park their cars. No one is allowed, except for unloading their luggage. No one is allowed in that semicircular, nor.
Or the, the straight drive.
Or the straight drives, all around the back. Our idea throughout has been emergency services first. We put big sign up where the hydrant is, everything, but also get our traffic away from the neighbors, most of whom we've apologized when we first took the inn. All sorts of things have been going on, but we've deliberately organized this. If anybody, if they're disabled, and the partner can't drive the car and pick up the disabled person, we do relax our standards and say, as you pull in the, not in front of the inn, never in front of the inn, they can park there. It happens once a year if that, so.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not opposed to the additional rooms. I think it's great.
Thank you.
The parking does concern me, though, but that's all I have for right now. Thank you, Sean.
Okay, thank you, John. Jay?
Aside from the parking, I just was curious, what are you going to do about the, all the ductwork and things like that that are currently running on the floor? I mean, how are you going to?
It's all been pulled out.
What are you replacing it with?
Two years ago, it was pulled out, but only after we'd had split heat pumps. It, it was for the floor below.
Yes.
But the furnace was on the third floor, and all the ductwork, it was horrendous. Before we could do anything there, that was the first step. So in '21, I think, we had heat pumps installed individually controlled for those top-floor rooms.
For this second-floor rooms.
Yeah, so having.
So that wasn't necessarily.
You're using the wall units, basically?
Yeah, and, and having had a, a winter, we weren't sure it was gonna be enough. We tested it. We tested it at minus 35 degrees wind chill, and it was heating at 70 degrees. And once we were happy with that, we said, right.
And so another question was, the guest room that currently is pretty much done is on the second floor, the number 10?
Number 10, yeah.
And you'd be putting two additional suites on the third floor?
Yes, yes.
And insulation in the attic would be above that?
Absolutely, yeah. It'd look fantastic.
It is a beautiful property, and it'd be nice to maintain it and keep it going. And it's part of Cape, so I really don't have any problems. But it looks like.
Thank you for your generous sentiments. Thank you.
Okay, Dick, do you have any questions?
I don't think I have any questions. Just I'd like to reiterate that you've done a beautiful job with the property. And it's got a ton of land if you ever had to add more parking spaces, one way or another. And I understand the reasoning behind wanting to have 12 rooms as opposed to nine. If these things, these B&Bs are to be successful, they have to have a certain amount, number of rooms to really make it work. And it's a beautiful building, and having 12 rooms there on 3 and something acres, I guess it is. I don't find it all upsetting to me. And I would be in favor of the application.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Is there anybody in our audience that wishes to speak in favor of this petition? If so, please come to the microphone.
No one coming.
Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this petition? If so, please come to the microphone.
No one coming.
We're going to close the hearing to the public, begin board discussion. Is anybody prepared to begin a discussion or to make a motion?
I'm comfortable with making a motion. I do think that, I mean, I don't know if we have to include it, but obviously, the conditions, as long as the health department and the building department are good with what they propose and get the right permits, I'm comfortable with making a motion to. I guess it's modify the current special permit? Is that what we're trying to do?
Yeah, we can modify the existing special permit to increase the number of rooms from nine to 12.
So it would be to modify the motion, modify the current special permit to move from nine to 12 rooms.
Based and conditioned upon any Board of Health approval as well as the building department approval?
Yes.
And that's relative to building codes and Board of Health regulations.
Correct.
But you're going to have to comply with those anyway. If, you may, you may not have to, but if you do. Okay. Do we have a second to the motion?
I'll second and also add that, you know, we would be giving a waiver from the requirement for a certified site plot plan less than two years old.
Yes, okay, thank you, Dick. Yes, we will be given a waiver for the requirement of a certified plot plan that's less than two, or more than two years old. Okay. All right. So we have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion on the motion? I agree with the rest of the board. I think it's a reasonable request. I do think they meet the criteria of the bylaw. I don't see any undue nuisance hazard or congestion in granting it. I think the petitioner has demonstrated that. I think the history of the building supports those number of rooms. And so for those reasons, I do think they have met the criteria. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none? That carries five in favor, none against unanimously. Now, folks, what happens now is after the decision is drafted, it will be filed with the town clerk. 20 days must elapse. That's a technical appeal period. I don't think anybody's going to appeal it. After that, you just contact Dolores. Well, she'll contact you because it may take a few days to get the decision written and then file with the clerk's office. She'll contact you. You take the special permit over to the registry of deeds and record it, and just bring a copy back for our records. Do you have any questions?
How long, how long does it last? I mean, is it, that's it, then?
It runs with the land.
Forever and ever.
Forever and ever.
All right, okay, so, yeah, that's good.
No further questions.
Runs forever, yeah. Until you might change it. Or if it, well, for purposes of what you guys are going to do, it runs for the land, runs with the land, and it would apply to subsequent purchasers as well.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your consideration.
Okay, we wish you the best of luck. And you've got a great building over there. We all love it.
Thank you.
Okay, have a nice night now.
You too, thank you.
We are going to go out of order one more time here because we have one that's a continued. I think it's just going to take a second. And I don't want to keep them waiting. It's petition 5148 here, Sand Dollar Customs LLC for 90 Seaview.
He's coming up now.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So we're here tonight, 90 Seaview. My name's Walter Warren. I'm the owner of, co-owner of Sand Dollar Customs. I'm on, I'm here on behalf of Ann Ward and her husband, who own the property. The property, most of you know, the history on it is years ago, it was.
But we've done, excuse me, sir, we've done all the history on the property. This is a continued matter. When's you going to bring us in a certified plot plan or something?
Yeah, yeah, I have that.
That's all we were waiting for, I think.
You have an 11 by 17 scale, and I have a full.
We do have it, Sean. I don't know if you've got it.
Yeah, I got it in my packet as well. So I think that's all we really needed, so we just knew where everything was going to be.
Correct.
I think we've already decided that we were in favor of your petition. But I will, is there anything you, I don't think there's anything you need to add. I'm going to go to the board and ask, were there any other questions that the board had of the petitioner? Or are we good to go with the plot plan as submitted? Anybody?
Sean, yeah, I have one little question. The, one of the earlier plans that showed the space, which is actually septic systems, as, you know, open space or whatever. And, you know, this is encroaching on that. I don't really have any real problem with it. I know that's been relieved given to at least one of the cottages here. But I don't know if anybody else is concerned about them encroaching on what was considered the open space area of the condominium?
Well, they would, that would be something for the homeowners association, I think, correct?
Probably, yeah.
And if they're near a septic system, they have to be so many feet away. Or they may need to get a variance from the Board of Health if they're within, I think it's 15 feet.
Shows 21 feet.
21? They're 21 away from the septic?
Yeah, that's what it shows.
Yeah, then they're good. They're far enough away.
I can live with it.
Okay, anyone else? No? Everybody satisfied?
Good.
Okay. Is anybody prepared to make a motion?
We don't need to do public or anything. We've already done that.
Well, okay, we'll do it again. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak in opposition to this petition? Please come to the microphone. If there's anyone there that wishes to speak in support of it, we really don't need to hear from you. We probably went over that last time, and the board seems to be in support of the petition, but.
I guess we're good. Nobody came up. I'd be glad to make a motion to approve the special permit as submitted.
Okay. Do we have a second?
A second.
Any discussion on the motion?
Just that maybe we should also add there that the addition is limited to, excuse me, being a screened porch and should not be converted to year-round living space.
We'll put that in. That's a good condition. We've done that with everybody else. I think that may have been in their presentation, but let's put that as a condition. It's a three, well, we'll call it, we won't even say three-season. We'll say it's a screened-in porch. And it's not to be for any year-round use, and no heat.
Sounds good.
Everybody comfortable with that?
Yes.
Okay. Any other conditions anybody feels that we need? I don't think so, but. Hearing none? Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Yes.
John.
Second.
John's second.
John?
Yes.
Okay. So a motion made by Jay, seconded by John, with the condition that it be screened in and no heat, and with the certified plot plan will be submitted into the record. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none? That passes unanimously, sir. As you may have heard on the last one, when a decision is written, it'll be filed with the town clerk. 20 days must elapse. That is a technical appeal period in case somebody wants to appeal the decision. Probably not going to happen here. After that, Dolores will contact you, let you know that your special permit is ready. You need to come get that, take it over to the registry of deeds, record it, and bring a copy of it back to us with the stamp on it that it's been recorded for our records. Do you have any further questions?
I have one question. On the plan, it calls for an easy-breeze system. And what that is, that's a screen system. But it has plastic panels that can go up and down so that if it's raining and the wind is blowing, the panels can go up.
Okay. Yeah, I think, I think that's fine. Is everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, okay. No, 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 thank you for bringing that to our attention. Now, that's fine. Okay, we're all, we're good for tonight. Thank you, sir, and wish you the best on your project.
Have a good day, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next matter on our petition is, on our agenda is, petition number 5153, Arthur N. Luke and L. Carlton Luke, Carlton Luke, excuse me, trustees of the 511 Main Street Trust, property location at 511 Route 28, West Yarmouth. It's in a B2 zoning district. The applicant seeks a variance from section 303.5.8 to place a 200-square-foot ice bending machine greater than six feet from the principal building. The applicant requests a waiver from the requirement for a certified site plot plan less than two years old. Good evening, gentlemen. Could you identify yourselves for the record, please?
Yes, good evening. For the record, my name is Andrew Singer. I'm an attorney in Dennisport here on behalf of the applicant. And with me at the table is A.J. Luke, who is the applicant. And in the first row, we have David Mcnevich, who is the project engineer, and David Hawk, who is the landscape architect. You have in front of you a summary of reasoning that I had submitted to you that I will go over. We had submitted, you have a landscape plan. You also have a, Mr. Mcnevich has prepared a current site plan. It's just not, it was not stamped, so we're using the engineer, the surveyed stamped plan when the septic system went in a couple of years ago. But that is the reason for the request from the waiver. So you do have a engineered site plan in front of you. And you also have that plan, though, for the survey, is a little bit older. This is, it's an interesting project. It had, I think everyone knows the property. Luke's Liquors, West Yarmouth through 28, at the intersection with Springer Lane. The applicant had been working with the building department since COVID, actually, on a proposed upgrade to the site. As you know, and I know, Dick, you'll love this, it's a nice sea of asphalt in front with no trees. And so they had proposed a conforming site upgrade to the parking. And it was actually thought that this ice machine, which was going to actually help block, break up that parking, have more landscaping in the front, everyone thought it was conforming. And it was going to be allowed by right. They weren't even going to have to come to you. Well, lo and behold, somebody was, this is before I got involved, somebody was looking at the zoning bylaw and buried in the sign code, don't ask me why. But in section 303.5.8, there is a provision that says ice machines have to be within six feet of the principal building. And so now you're seeing us this evening before you. Everything that's on the site plan is permitted by right except the location of the ice machine. So we worked with Mr. Grills and the changes to the parking lot, the safety improvements. As you can see, removing some of the asphalt, putting in some additional green space, channelizing the drive, so when you come in, you don't just go all over the place. You would actually one-way flow. You go into the right, circle around to the left from 28. That's all allowed. But having this machine there is what needs a variance. And the variance is something that, you know, you don't often see. However, when I was looking at this, and I'd like to take you through the site, and we're happy for any questions as well, I believe that we meet the variance criteria in this case because of the, as you know, 48 section 10 talks about unique situations as you know, 48 Section 10 talks about unique situations with the structures, with the land or the structures. In this case, we kind of have a bit of both of that. When you look at the site plan, C201, which is Mr. McNevic's plan, we do have the frontages on two streets, and the building is on the, if you're on Route 28, the building's in the back of the property. There is a, on the, excuse me, Springer Lane side, there is a driveway that goes down. That's how you get to the back of the property there, paved driveway. And so you couldn't put, right now, there are three machines that are seasonally at the property. They'd like to remove two of them from there and replace them with the one new machine. So you can't, there's nowhere to put it in another, you couldn't put this machine on the Springer Lane side of the property. On the other side of the property, the east side of the property, if you look at Mr. McNevic's plan, you see a hashed, a striped hash mark area next to the building. That's actually a fire lane, and it's how they get to the back of the shopping plaza to the east. So the ice cream shop that's there, in the back of the building, the rest of that building on the property to the left, if you're standing on 28, that's how you get there. That's how emergency services, dumpsters are back there. So there's no place, you can't put it there within six feet of the building because you'd be blocking a fire lane. And if you put it right in front of the building, you'd be blocking the entrances. So, given the positioning of the building on the land, given the historical development of the property with these two driveways that go down both sides of the building and have to stay open, there really is no way to upgrade the ice machine to this, to this modern unit right in front of the building within six feet. And again, I don't know how long that provision's been in the sign code. I don't know why it's in the sign code. Ideally, it doesn't need to be in the sign code at all, but it is. So we believe there is a hardship based on these unique conditions that I just outlined to you. And we believe that the proposal before you, and now we'll flip maybe to the landscape plan in addition to the site plan, that there will not be the second and third prongs of the variance test. There will not be a substantial detriment to the public good, and there will not be a derogation from the intent and purpose of the zoning bylaw. And for that, as I put in my summary of reasoning, I believe there are many reasons to justify that. The ice machine itself is going to be completely conforming to all setbacks. There will be no change or increase in intensity of use at the property. There will be a significant improvement to the onsite circulation with this reconfigured parking field that Mr. McNevic is showing on his site plan. There is going to be new landscaping with new trees and an expanded buffer with less parking in front of the building at the front of the property. There is no way you can have parking not in front of the property on this site. It's impossible. But right now, there is zero tree, you know, zero really vegetation out front. You're going to have a significant improvement, and that's shown on the landscape plan. And we also gave you some architectural renderings that kind of show what it's anticipated to be looking like. Two of the parking, as I mentioned, two of the parking spaces, oh, well, there'll be some parking lost at the front of the, right now, the site is overparked. There are, you don't hear me say that very often. But the parking demand is 28 spaces, there are 49 on the site today. What Mr. Luke is proposing is to bring it down to 32. So it's going to be conforming, but by reducing those 17 parking spaces, you're going to be able to have an increased buffer in the front, going to be able to remove two spaces to improve the fire lane to get to behind the ice cream shop next door in the other plaza. Right now, it gets a little tight there with cars, so by pulling these back, you'll actually be improving the access to the, around the building for emergencies. The ice machine's going in an area that's asphalt today, and so, you know, there's no change there. But some of the asphalt around it's being ripped up, as you can see on the landscape plan, for additional plantings. There is going to be no negative impact on the town's water supply or drainage. Groundwater's not going to be harmed. Building coverage on the site is already pre-existing non-conforming, and it's going to be, it's going to go up, but only by 0.4%. So it's 212 square feet. So it's going up very nominally. By the same token, pre-existing non-conforming site coverage is being reduced from 81.8% down to 77.9. So there's actually going to be, I think, a better trade-off, is you're going to have more green space on the site. There's going to be no noise, litter, odor, or other sources of potential nuisance or inconvenience. Mr. Luke has one of these machines at his Dennis store, if you've ever been by there. And he's been there for many years, and so he knows about the operations of it and is not something that causes concern or issues. Utilities are going to be fine, there's no impact to those. And we submit that allowing the replacement ice machine as shown on the plans will not only not negatively impact the neighbor, neighboring properties or the traveling public, but it's going to the contrary to be an improvement. Because of the, one, you're having what's in effect almost like a liner building out front, which will shield some of the parking. But you're also going to have the improved, less asphalt and improved landscaping there. For those reasons, we're respectfully asking you for a variance to allow an ice machine that's further than six feet from the building. We're asking for that waiver from the, for the septic plan, which is stamped by the surveyor, so you can accept the, that plus the engineered site plan that Mr. McNevic did and Mr. Hawk's landscape plan. If you have questions on any of this, we'd be happy to answer them, and we thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you. I've got a couple of questions before I hand it over to the others. Why couldn't you put this in the front-left corner of the building right now where those horizontal lines are?
Because those horizontal lines are, and I have a picture, it won't help you shine because I can't show it on TV, but that is where you get to, that's the only access to the dumpsters and the fire lane to get you behind not only Mr. Luke's building, but also the ice cream shop and the shopping plaza to the east. If you put the machine there, you're blocking that off, and so you're shutting down a fire lane, there'll be no way to access.
And so you're suggesting that to access this ice machine, people are going to drive in and take a right and drive around the whole parking lot and come around and come right back out to 28 to get their ice? Is that what you're suggesting?
Well, that, yes, yes, sir.
This is Mr. Luke.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry I don't have the English accent the gentleman before had because he was a lot more fun to listen to. But absolutely, people will either, you know, some people might be just coming in for ice if they're earlier in the morning, but most people will just be walking from their car into the store like a normal customer, but also taking a walk over to the ice machine and then just, you know, going back to their car. So it's not just, we're not attracting a new customer here. We're just putting a unit on the property that's going to supply ice much more efficiently than right now.
Well, I'll be right up front, the problem that I have is you're the busiest liquor store in town. I think anybody's familiar with it, you do a great business there, and that we're very happy that you do. Eliminating parking spaces, I think, is the last thing you want to do because I've seen that place in the middle of the summer, and sometimes it's very hard to get in and out of there. I don't really see it being realistic that someone's going to not drive in and take an immediate left. I would suggest that everybody's going to do that, which is going to cause a traffic tie-up for people that are accessing your liquor store. This doesn't really appear to me to be any type of a vending machine in the true sense of the word. To me, I interpret this as a standalone business. So, and I am not really finding that you're meeting the criteria for variance. I don't see a hardship here at all, and I don't see that it's owing to the criteria that's listed in the variance criteria. So I'm having a hard time supporting this, but I'm going to go to the others for questions and comments. Dick, do you have any questions for the petitioner?
No, personally, I don't know, from what I've always seen there, I've never seen the existing parking lot full, so I think a reduction of parking spaces and becoming conforming in terms of, in terms of the layout and directions and so forth, I think is good. You know, a building isn't terribly attractive, but it's an ice machine, so what are you going to do? I don't have a problem with that. I appreciate some additional planting being done. Yeah, I'd love to see a little bit going all the way down the east side there, too, where there's pretty much nothing in that, in that boundary. I know you're putting some closest to the ice machine. And that's good. I don't, you know, I don't think I have any real problem with it other than a little additional landscaping upgrading might be appreciated. But I think it's a good change to what's there now.
Okay, Jay?
I guess the same thing Dick said, I think the flow is improved, and I'd certainly love to see some plantings in trees around there, would make the place look a lot better. I guess what I'm struggling with is just the size and location of the ice machine. I don't even know if I'd call it an ice machine or an ice warehouse, I'm not sure, but it's huge.
May I interrupt at some point?
Sure.
And I apologize for interrupting. The unit holds like 6,000 pounds of ice, that's kind of, most of the size of it is due to the storage of it. I'd also add that this location of ours is down $2 million in volume since just, since like 10 years ago, not just the COVID period. I mean, the only time this lot is really swelling is the Fourth of July, and the entire Cape is swelling at that point. Other than that, I wouldn't, you know, want to put an ice machine out there that's going to limit my parking to reduce my volume at a store.
Sorry, people drinking less, I guess.
Yes.
But that's just my, that's my main concern, it's just a big building, it's close to the street. I would have preferred to see it on the side, but I understand the concern about the emergency location. So, you know, balancing out all the, I guess, the benefits and improvements in the site, you know, I think I'm okay with it, but certainly would have liked it further back.
Yeah, if I could add that if it wasn't for the fire department, I would prefer it there as well. I suspect if we were to put a fence right up our side of the property, which we potentially could do, that would just totally inhibit the fire department from getting around to the other building, which has had fires over the years, it's a wooden structure. But I would prefer it there. I was kind of, it kind of progressed to where it is here.
So I guess that's all I have, the more planting you can put in, the better, though. Dick on that one.
John?
I'm going to put these pictures, how are your customers going to know what this thing is? Is there any signage, or how are they going to know there's an ice machine?
Word of mouth, it's, this machine will be very effective, like the one I have in Dennis. It's, it's impressed me, it's been, the one I've had in Dennis has been there 10 years. I never did any advertising, people just, it's the only device like that on the Cape. There's one in Manimat, there's one like in Fall River, they're all over down south Texas, you know, in the warmer states. But it's a gadget that provides ice inexpensively, and it's, it's a fun vending machine for some people, they just enjoy the process. It's a, it's kind of a phenomenon.
The slots?
Weird phenomenon.
And this thing will run 24/7?
Well, it only runs when it's making ice, so.
Well, what I'm saying.
It'll be available.
Yes, sir, yeah.
And the access point to it, you know, as you see on the plans, is facing the store. So you'd be not facing the street, it'd be on the back.
Yeah, I thought that was a benefit by kind of keeping the action facing us, not facing the road.
Right.
Better security.
And then so Sean mentioned that, you know, your intention is to come in, go around right, circle around, and then end up at that ice machine, correct?
If you're going just for ice, but most people tie it in.
And somebody driving in there doesn't know where it is, they could be driving all over the place looking for this thing, right? There's no sign, there's nothing saying ice here, right?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. Not sure what kind of signage I'll ever be able to put on it, but the color of the wrap obviously will dictate what's going on there. But I'm not concerned with people not knowing it's not an ice machine, it's just, it's word of mouth. It'll, it'll, you know, present itself.
And it's going to, there's going to be, when you come in, there's going to be a sign, so on the, there's going to be a sign between where the right and left splits that says one way, go this way. And there's going to be a do not enter sign on the left.
Okay.
So when people come in, they are going, to Sean's concern as well, they're going to be channelized. There's going to be signage that says, go this way. There are going to be arrows on the asphalt, and then you'll have, so that's not enough, people might not listen, but you'll have the sign, a do not enter, and a go this way.
That was my concern, people just driving all over the place trying to get to a second building on, on the property, you know what I mean?
No, it's going to be much better than it is today. Because right now, when you walk in, or, sorry, walk in, when you drive in, you sort of go in and it's a free-for-all, whichever way you're going to go. This will be better and with the signage. And if you can also see, because, as you see on Mr. McNevic's plan, the drive aisles to go right and to go left, they're wide.
Yeah.
They're extra wide, so it's also going to open up. Right now, the parking space is striped, come right up. So it's actually going to be wider, there's going to be more maneuverability, plus the signage. So we think it's going to be a big improvement.
This is an eight-week season for this machine, too. It's, I mean, the one I have in Dennis is closed October through May. This is intense for July, half-August, and that's it. It's, other than that, it's really a slow draw.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have, Sean.
Anthony?
I don't have any questions, it's more of a commentary, but I'd give Attorney Singer another chance at this because I don't think I'm moved yet on how it's a hardship, a financial hardship, because people are drinking less doesn't qualify, it has to be owing to the actual property. So I don't see how it's related to the soil conditions, topography, or the land itself. So I'd be curious to see how you respond to that.
I'd be happy to. 48 Section 10 in the Yarmouth zoning bylaw mimics the state statute, says that the hardship has to be based on the soil conditions, shape, or topography of the land or the structures thereon. And so there is an express, it's written right into the law, that you can look at the structures and looking at the historical development on a piece of property that also justifies variances. One of the biggest cases has been, was a long, long time ago, was a church, I think it was in Wareham, you know, that was being proposed to be used for something other than a church because it was just no longer religious, and it needed a variance. And the variance was upheld by the court on the fact that the structure couldn't otherwise be reasonably used. And in the variances that I've done in whichever town it's been that have been related to a structure, because sometimes it's land, you know, sometimes it's the shape or the soil, you have wetland soils or whatever, which we don't have here. But when it's been to the structure, it is, what the literature says is, is it, can something not be reasonably utilized for something, for a building, if you're reusing a building? Can something not be reasonably reutilized for a purpose that's otherwise allowed? In this case, I see it as being analogous, which is that the ice machine itself, this unit, if there wasn't a fire lane, on the, if there was more, like in Dennis, the Dennis property is actually, looks like this, but on one street only. So you got the building, and then the ice machine's right next to the building, so there's plenty of room. It's not near any setbacks, it's, you know, it's, it fits. Here, we have the building where it is, the two frontages, and most particularly, it's the fire lanes, and the, you know, on both sides of the building. As, as A.J., we've said, you know, there's no real way to put it next to the building, not practically, you know, without shutting down the fire lane. And I drove through that fire lane this morning, and and when I went back there, there's three dumpsters, it goes to a dirt, it's a gravel drive that goes around, not only the back of the ice cream shop, but also it appears to go all the way back down the large building that's over there as well. And so you can't really, you don't want to shut that off. You know, it is, it's acting as an easement for fire safety access. I think when you look at all of those, I do think they meet this nature of a hardship. It's not a financial hardship. But the 4810 is looking at a substantial financial or practical hardship. And in this case, I think there is a substantial practical hardship because of all the reasons that I just said. It is just a very unique site with a, it's been developed, I don't know how old that building is, but it's been there for many, many decades.
1973.
73. So it's, it's been there for more than half a century, and you've got multiple curb cuts, there are two out on Springer Lane, although one in the back, I think, is just for his deliveries and, you know, the uses, the customers. I did, when I was there, I saw people come in off both driveways, one off Springer and off 28. So that is where I see the hardship, that it's a substantial practical hardship based on the conditions right around the building, you know, which is where this ice machine would otherwise have to go.
I'll wait to where, see if there's any comments from the public.
Yeah, Andrew.
Yes.
Again, how come you can't put that up if you're looking at the front of the building? And I said those horizontal spots, that square right there, you say you need access. How come you can't just eliminate those spaces just to the left of those and put it up right there?
It's right here.
Right here.
Well, part of the reason for, I mean, could you physically put it there? I assume you could, but Sean, one of the concerns is, and it shows in the pictures I took, but that area, right where you said, so those three spots that you talked about, Sean, that is where the ice cream store puts out their picnic tables. There's some asphalt and there's some crushed stone, and so if you.
Let me, let me, let me correct you, okay? Because I want to make sure your representations are correct.
Please.
That's not where they put their, that's not where, I'm talking about eliminating the parking spaces, which you're doing right now.
Oh, no, I'm talking on their side of the property line. I'm talking on their side of the property.
There's no egress between that parking lot and Luke's parking lot, because they have that shut off.
Yeah, only in the summer, it's open right now.
It's open right now, okay, because it's shut, well, you're only open during the summer, so.
Yeah. Yeah, and I didn't mean that they were having tables on Mr. Luke's property, they're absolutely not.
No, they don't have any, they don't have any tables on Mr. Luke's property.
No, 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 no. What I meant is the ice machine would be facing them. I mean, you'd be sitting at the picnic table staring at the ice machine, that's what I was trying to.
Why is that Mr. Luke's concern?
I'm not opposed to the ice machine being over there either.
So why don't we put it over there, and then we don't have to have all of this traffic going all over the place? And, I mean, let's face it, the amount of traffic that comes in and out of his driveway, when you're taking into consideration the driveway across the street with the water park, that's the busiest section of Route 28 in Yarmouth right there. That, that stretch of, and you're well aware of that, too, Andrew, because you represent the people across the street. That's very busy right there.
No, in the summer.
If you have another place to put it up there, and quite frankly, you might even be able to almost qualify by, you'd only have it 10 feet away from the building instead of.
Well, it would be.
On 28.
Yeah, well, it would not, it would not even be 10, it would be more than that, given that fire lane, Sean. But to your point, would it be a lot closer to the building? Absolutely. Would we be asking for the same legal relief? Yes, because it would be a variance to have an ice machine more than six feet from the building. Is, I mean, could the ice machine go there or go further back? I guess the answer is yes, we just have to make sure we keep the fire lane open.
Well, that to me seems more of a, a better place to put it.
So just, Sean, to make sure. Sean, just to make sure, just so you, I want to make sure we're on the same page. If you're looking at Mr. McNevic's plan, and you see the hash marks that you said, right, that hashed area? And then there are four parking spaces, and then there's a new traffic, a new landscape island that Mr. Luke was proposing? Okay.
Just eliminate the first three spots.
Well, you couldn't, you have to keep the first spot next to the hash area because you need that for swing of the fire truck. You could, in theory, put it in the next three.
Okay.
You know.
So the landscape island plus the two to the left.
But it's in the driveway, not in.
Oh, you couldn't put it in there?
Okay. Oh, yeah, so what Mr. McNevic just told me, it can't be right at the edge of the parking because it has to meet the setbacks.
Right.
You still have to meet setbacks, no matter what you do.
It would then stick out a little bit into the traffic. It would then stick out a little bit into the, the traffic.
It would, it would stick out a little bit into the traffic aisle, correct? Or, behind me, they're telling me, Sean, that it would stick out a lot into the traffic aisle because you, you do have to be conforming. Do you see where the ice machine is proposed now? You see how far from the.
I mean, I, I, I see exactly what you're doing here. My biggest problem is you, you're, you're going to have, there's going to be congestion here. Aside from the fact, I listened to your variance explanation and I, quite frankly, as a matter of law, I don't agree with it. But that's, I'm trying to make something work here.
Yeah.
I just have a problem with, this is taking up a lot of room. Okay, maybe it only goes for the summertime or how many weeks that Mr. Luke is going to use it. But you're going to turn what is already a very busy parking lot into a much busier parking lot. And I really don't see anybody coming in. And you're telling me you're going to put do not enter signs up there? I don't see those on any of your plans. As a matter of fact, another question I have is, is this going to be, is this building going to look as represented on these plans with the gray and the blue? Or are we wrapping it as we, we just talked about it's something else?
No, this is, this would, sorry. This would remain white and blue, by the schemes.
Okay.
And Sean, just see, just so you know, on the site plan, there is the keep right sign is called out. And there will also be a do not enter sign that it's not called out, but the keep right sign is on the site plan, in the landscape plan.
And, and so because you've got an ice machine here, you're telling everybody that pulls into Luke's parking lot that they have to take a right now instead of coming into that whole other left-hand section of the parking lot?
That is correct.
And you don't think that's going to cause any congestion?
We think it's actually going to be, we think it's going to be.
I mean, I've been going, I've been going into Luke's for twenty-five years. I, I'm very, I think anybody who shops over there, and he does a great business in the summertime, we're glad to have him. He's a longtime businessman of the town. Okay? But I'm just trying to be realistic here. I think this is going to cause congestion.
Sean, if you, if you look at, if you look at the, the, the septic plan with, with the cur-, which shows the curb cut, where it's coming in, right now, when you come into that curb cut, you're immediately faced with two rows of parking. There's a double-barrel parking spaces that, right, right in your face. And you either have to take a sharp right or a sharp left and then a sharp left and a sharp right. You know, because you have to get around the parking spaces. This actually opens it up because now when you come in, you're going to be flowing with arrows and with a wider space right into that drive around. Whereas today, if there are cars parked near the front, there's more congestion because the parking's so close to the street.
Andrew, I've driven that place.
I know.
Fifty times a year, okay? I know exactly how that parking lot works, okay? I, I, you're not going to convince me. I see congestion there and.
Well, that might be, that might be.
I'm not, I'm not seeing a hardship here, okay? And I, that explanation about the structures, while it sounded good, that's not my interpretation of the, of the, of the law regarding variances. But I, I hear what you're saying. So, so what you're saying is there's no other alternative place in that whole place that you can put that ice machine, other than that spot right there?
This is, what we're saying is this is the best place because it is the, we believe it keep, it's the, it allows the most significant improvement to circulation on the site. If you put it back closer to that fire lane, as we were discussing, you're going to be losing part of the, you're going to be losing part of the drive aisle and then actually making it worse. Without, unless we came for a dimensional variance, asking you to let us put it too close to a setback, which we're trying not to do, but I guess we could.
I mean, you're, you're asking for variances, so I mean, you can, if, if you're asking for one, you can ask for another. I mean, the variance criteria is much different than the special permit criteria, as you understand.
No, absolutely. I guess another benefit of this, a- a- as we see it, is you're, you're actually improving the way it's shown on the plan now. Forget the variance for a moment. From a site aesthetics point of view, this will be the, the best way to improve the aesthetics and the landscaping and the visual appearance of the property. If you put the ice machine further back, then you, you got to keep the parking that's out front, out front. So you're going to keep more parking and less vegetation out by the street in exchange for putting the ice machine further back on the property. And I, and I just, I think knowing how this board, and as you noted, I've been before you on a number of projects up and down twenty-eight here, you're always looking to improve the aesthetics along twenty-eight and you're looking at that. And across the street, Sean, there was a project that you, that, that you were not in support of because you wanted a structure closer to the street to hide parking. And, and in this case, respectfully, what, what this is showing is exactly that, to the extent you can on this lot.
Yeah, I'm not, I, I, I appreciate the comment, but I'm not sure that I'm buying into that.
Yeah.
Is anything else you'd like to add?
I guess I'd love to know if Mr. Panabianco agrees with my argument now because I can count as well as you can.
Are you asking for a poll?
I guess I'm, well, I, you probably go to the public first, but, but at some point, yes, I'd be asking for a poll.
All right, why don't we go to the public, then we'll come back and we'll talk to the board?
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak in favor of this petition? If so, please come to the microphone. Hearing none? Is there anyone in opposition to this petition? If so, please come to the microphone.
No one's coming.
Seeing none, okay? We are going to then close it to the public. We will leave it open for the petitioner if we, the petitioner needs some input, we need from him. So why don't we just cut to the chase here? You need four out of five. I'm a no vote. We're going to poll the board. I think three of them, well, I don't know. Let's poll the board. Dick?
Yes.
Jag?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Anthony?
No.
No. Okay. You've got three in favor, two against. As you know, Andrew, that fails.
No, it's.
You wish us to take a, a vote on this? Or would you like to withdraw this petition without prejudice and maybe come back with another idea?
Well, can I have one second just to talk to Mr. Luke? I'll be right back.
Okay.
Have a, have a option C, Mr. Igo. The question, would you, would the board be willing to continue us so that we could look at potentially some other options?
Yes, well, I, I'd certainly be in favor of that if you want to try.
Continuance then would be more helpful than a withdrawal.
Okay. How does the board feel about that? Well, there's three of you in favor of this petition. Anthony, would you be in favor of allowing them to continue this to try to find another alternative that we could consider?
Yes, of course.
And so would I. So if that's what you, how much time would you need to, to put something together?
What's the first date that we probably can fit it? Oh, no, I know.
Yeah, Dolores, what are we looking at for dates?
Well, the next available date is February twenty-seventh, but I want to make sure the petitioner can be ready by then.
Yeah. Yeah, so, so if we continue to February twenty-seventh, you'd want everything about, what, a week ahead of time?
At least.
Two weeks?
Right, I mean.
Two weeks. All right, so.
Because if you have to.
Does that have to be, Dolores, does that, we don't have to do any, do we have to do any advertising on that?
Depends. If they're, they're amending the application, then we would need to re-advertise and re-notify the abutters.
Well, I'm, I'm not sure. So I guess the only reason we would be revising the application would be if we had to add a set, let's say, let's say it was going to be too close to a setback.
Right.
We'd have to add that. Because the machine, if it's more than six feet from the building, that's the same relief. No, no, you know, it doesn't matter where it is. And I'd have to look at the legal ad, but since it was advertised for a variance, I, I don't know that that would have to be legally advertised, but if it did, we would still, we could do that during the continuance period. You know, I could give you an application, or I could, I could amend the application. You could re-notify it and then you just add that in when you review it again. That's not a legal problem.
Yeah, the deadline for that would be noon on February fifth. That's why I want to make sure that you.
Okay, okay, all right.
Do that.
Okay, so, so.
If you're changing it, you're changing it. Whether you call it modification or revising, it's the same thing. We need to let people know.
Okay, so if, well, if it's, if we're just moving where the machine's going, I don't think you need to re-advertise to the abutters.
I don't think so.
But, but, because it's still the same relief, the same legal ad, and they always can come in and look at the plans. I think it's only if we add a new form of relief, you know, setback, sep- you know, side setback, that would have to be re-advertised. I would agree with you.
Yes.
So, all right, so what you're saying is if we're doing that, you need it by two, four or five so you can re-advertise, but if we're not making any changes, you would need it by the thirteenth?
Right.
Okay. We, we can do that.
And so that, that would be to the, what, the twenty?
Twenty-seven.
February twenty-seventh, Mr. Chairman.
Twenty-seventh, okay. Why don't, yeah, why don't we do that? I, I, I think I may tend to agree with you on that, Andrew, that we probably don't have to. I'll let you and Dolores work that out, but.
Yeah, we don't have to answer that tonight.
You're still looking, you're still looking for the same relief. It's going to be more than six feet from the building.
Oh, absolutely, it's going to be more than six feet. The only question is, is if an alternative would push it too close to a pro- a side property line, then we might need more relief, but if.
And you might need, you might need setback relief, too. So maybe you do need to re-ad, let's, let's make sure we're.
If, that's an if. And I, but we don't know that that's going to be the case. It may not be the case.
Okay.
But we'll let you, we'll, I'll, I'll coordinate with Dolores and let her know.
Yeah, because if you just, if you just slide it backwards now, Sean, it's going to stick out into that, that lane of traffic.
Yeah, you can't just, yeah.
Without, without moving it closer to the property line.
Which still might be conforming because it's a side property line. I, I don't have the, I have to, we have to check the measurements.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, do we have a motion to continue until February twenty-seven?
Still moved.
We have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Okay, we'll see you on the twenty-seventh. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Singer, I need you to.
And can you sign an extension on that, Andrew?
I will. Dolores has already asked me to.
I know, she, she makes sure we don't forget those things.
Mr. Chairman, can I request a quick five-minute break, please?
Yes, we're going to, we're going to go into recess for five minutes and we'll come right back.
I know, it's twenty, no, that side is twenty-five.
But if there's two, between two commercial facilities, does that matter? Is B two?
B two, yeah.
And they were proposing was a lot less.
Yeah.
The building, the building itself is closer. Doesn't say. None of the plans say how far the building is off the line, but it certainly, it's probably, it could be twenty.
Yeah, maybe twenty, actually.
Well, well, maybe not. Because here's the building. And we're talking about, just about the building itself.
Yeah, that's twenty, right?
I thought this was less, but, you know. There was something that showed it. Oh, yeah, twenty-six to the actual. So they have, they move it five feet in. Lose some of that. Because this, this, I'm sure this pad has to stay the same size. We'll see. Big ice machine.
It's a big ice machine.
Okay, everybody back?
Yes.
Okay, why don't we call the last petition? Let me find my agenda. Petition number five-one-five-four, Gade Masonary and Landscaping, property location one Windswept Path, Yarmouth Port. It's in an R forty zoning district and the applicant seeks a variance from section two-oh-three-point, three-point, two-oh-three-point-five for side setback relief to construct a fourteen-by-twenty-six in-ground pool.
Mr. Chairman, we have someone in the room and someone on the Zoom.
Okay. The person at the table, could you identify yourself, please?
Yes, good evening. My name is Batshia Syedarian.
Okay. And are you the owner of the property, sir?
Yes, sir.
You are, okay. Could you tell us what you want to do here?
We wanted to put a, you know, a small swimming pool there, as mentioned in the plan, for the family's use, basically.
Okay, all right. And you're seeking a variance for this?
Yes, we're seeking a variance since the swimming pool design is less than twenty feet that's designated setback from the neighbor's property.
Is that the rear setback?
It's the rear setback, yes.
That's, um, hold on one second here. I think your side setback, actually, you want a corner lot?
Yeah. Correct. Corner lot.
Yeah. Okay, on corner lots, you have two sides and two fronts. You don't have, but it is technically, it looks like your rear property.
Yes, it looks like the rear of the building, sort of, yeah.
For technically speaking.
Yeah.
Same either way.
All right. And so the pool itself is going to be fourteen and a half feet from the sideline setback?
Uh, yes, sir.
And, and how big is the apron, the patio that goes around it?
I don't have the correct measurements in front of me, although it should show it on the site plan or the drawings.
Doesn't show that.
It doesn't show.
No.
So it basically goes from the, where the, uh, back of the house, where, where the, the room finishes, it starts right at the base, the steps, and then goes.
It looks like, it's about almost half of the distance between the sideline and the pool.
Very likely, yes.
It's about four feet.
Four feet?
Four feet.
Four feet after, after the pool envelope, correct.
Okay. On the site plan, it looks bigger than that, yeah.
Yeah.
And six feet from the house.
Fourteen and a half feet, isn't it?
Yeah.
Well, we can, we can always limit that if we were intend to, if we're inclined to support it. The, it, it looks to me by what you're doing with the pool that the, when you come out of the house, the right side, as you're looking out of the back of the house, that's where you're going to have your lounge chairs and your tables set up. So that's where you need a larger area, correct?
Exactly, yes.
Exactly.
Okay, and the other one is really just to walk around the pool so you can climb in and climb out?
Exactly, yes, basically.
Okay, okay. And the same on the other side? All right. I don't have any other questions. Why don't we go to the board? Anthony, do you have any questions for the petitioner?
I don't. The request is straightforward.[1746.68]
I don't. The request is straightforward. I thought, I'm, I am interested in hearing from the neighbors, who I think are here.
Okay. All right. Uh, John, do you have any questions?
No, uh, we cleared that up at the apron, the width of the apron, and how close you're gonna actually be to the lot line. Um.
I think for purposes of discussion, and, um, if we were inclined to grant some relief here, um, he's 14 and a half feet from the actual pool. If he needs another, let's say, three to four, say, four feet around the back.
About 10 feet.
Yeah, so you're probably, you're looking at 10 feet off the lot line.
Yeah, okay.
10 feet off the lot line, and I believe in an R40, if I'm not mistaken, you need 20. So he's seeking 10 feet of relief. Okay.
I don't have anything else.
Jay?
I know the property, and it's, it's, this is a big, it's already been a big extension of what was there, and it's a small lot. Um, and I know how close it is to the neighbors, so I'm concerned about that. Um, you know, it's close to the house, too. So I have some concerns. Certainly, I think it's too, that they, I would be very uncomfortable with the, uh, the side, the patio part of the pool at all.
Okay. The apron, yeah?
I'm not real, I'm not real comfortable with, with the size of it, where it's located, so. But I'll wait to hear.
Okay, all right. Dick?
Yeah, I don't find anything too bad about it, but if it could be moved more into the patio area and, uh, patio, I think you could extend on top of the septic system, if I'm not mistaken, uh, such that it would get it a little further from the lot line, that would be a good thing.
Okay. Um, sir, that, that septic system is represented as existing, correct?
Yes, uh, it's, it's a very large septic system. And we looked, uh, we were thinking to put it on the other side. There were certain, uh, uh, I shouldn't say restrictions, but challenges, uh, as far as, uh, having either to relocate the septic and its very wide leaching field, which was kind of a, uh, big, big problem. And besides the, uh, also, we were concerned that, uh, the sun would not, uh, basically reflect right on, on that part of the, uh, yard during the, you know, useful times of the pool.
And if I may, we could do as well is just not have the extra patio around the pool. We could literally finish the pool on the coping itself, and then attach with the grass in there.
Actually, we, I was, if I may, uh, we were not planning to put an extra patio towards the neighbor's property. There's nothing in the plans to put an extra patio.
Shows it on the plan.
It shows, but, uh, it's probably drawn like that, but it's not our intention to put, yeah. Because we have enough patio in front of the house, patio area, so, uh, I probably would be planting that area with, uh, grass or, you know, some green shrubs.
Well, let me ask you this question. Uh, how big is that patio? Is that patio already constructed?
It is constructed, sir, yes.
And what are the dimensions of the patio itself?
I'm not sure if, uh-
Not 100% with, with the measurements right in front of me, but I would say it's probably, uh, 16 feet by 20 something. I would say 24, 20 something.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that looks about, that sounds about right.
I did measure back then, but I don't have those measurements right in front of me. And we kinda put the, located the pool, uh, I mean, right after that, just, uh-
Yeah, right, yeah, off the perpenter, even with the edge of the house, of the garage.
Correct.
Well, um, okay.
I'm just curious, as far as between the two yards, it shows a stockade fence. Is there gonna be any greenery, too, or is it just gonna be a stockade fence?
The fence is already there. It's existing, but we're, we're planning to put all greenery all around the fence.
In front of the fence, and?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a certain height you're trying to put there?
Probably, uh, probably like, uh, those tall grasses, four foot, five foot.
Yeah.
Well, we're not planning, unless it's needed for privacy, then we can do it. But I don't think there's a need for it. I also don't, I'm, I'm not planning also to obstruct the neighbor's view.
And so there's no way that you could have put that septic system in the front yard?
It was existing?
Yeah, it was existing. Yeah, it's, it's gonna be very difficult and very costly, actually.
This, this house was completely redone in the last year or two, Sean?
Year and a half.
Yeah, I have it up in front of me, actually, on my computer.
Yeah. I mean, it was a-
Your-
It was a sing, I think a one, one-story before.
It was a one-story house. We were very, in a very, um, bad shape. So, uh, we, we tried to-
It's a much larger garage and much taller, much larger house.
We have a bigger family, so.
It's a nice house.
Yeah, no, I, I, I see what you're, what you did here. And how far are you away? Well, let's talk about that. How far are you actually away from, oh, I see where you're gonna go with this right here. Um.
So the, the pool should finish at 14 and a half foot from the fence, uh, setback, basically.
Okay, all right. Well, okay. Um, well, do we have people in our audience that want to be heard, or, like, I think we have some letters, correct?
Uh, we also have some folks in the audience, Mr. Chairman, who we think also wrote a letter, so.
Well, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna read their letter and hear from both of them. Uh, so they can either, do they want to talk, or do they want to, uh, I'll tell you what, they'd like, I'll do whatever they want to do. I can read their letter into the record.
They'd like to speak, Sean.
Okay, all right. Well, why don't we hear from the, uh, from the neighbors? So.
Yep.
Um, sir, if you'd like to come up and speak, I presume you're here to speak in opposition, because I don't have any letters of support.
That's right.
Uh, could you identify yourself for the record, please, sir?
Yes, Thomas Manning, Two Shell Drive, the, uh, the neighbor right on the sideline in question.
So would you be the person who's just on the other side of the fence from where the pool is gonna be?
Right, it would be the one most impacted by it, yes.
Okay, okay. All right, go ahead, sir. Please tell us your thoughts.
Well, I've, I've been there 31 years, and I've seen the house sold six times. Um, it is a case of, it gets used as rental, it's had many other uses, it's a tired old place. It started out at 1,468 square feet, according to the town's plans. It's grown to a 20, 3,776 square foot home. The garage has doubled in size, pushed another full bay towards the sideline, and the, the deck is definitely more than 16 feet wide. It, uh, it's absolutely been tripled from what was there before. So any has, any kind of existing hazard that has to come in here has been caused by the growth of what's on the property. It's pushed everything close to that line. Every tree and bit of greenery has been removed all around it. There's one lone tree still sitting there, and I know it stays outnumbered. I had a little discussion with, uh, the neighbor a week or two ago, and he said it's ugly and it's time to go. So, uh, it is gonna get pretty cleared. I'm not sure that I, uh, I'm looking forward to any kind of, uh, um, opening up of that side the way it's been with a pool right so close to that thing. It's gonna get down to 10 feet and more. The state code, I believe, requires an apron. It doesn't say you can have an edge of a pool right on the lawn. It's looking for at least four feet. That really should be the edge of what is encroaching on the sideline. So it drops it below the 14 feet or so. Um, already, the, the setback from the septic system has dropped to 12.9 feet from the required 20. The distance from the structure is down to 6.1 from the required 10. We're talking 40% chops here, and then losing probably 50% at least on the sideline. The lot is too small to support a pool in that area, especially if there's just the fence height between the two of them. It is right on the property line virtually at that point. Um, when the home was being built, I was very much in favor of the renovation. I appeared at the Old Kings Highway and was the only one who showed up and spoke in favor of what was gonna happen. It has grown with the garage getting pushed back more and the patio much larger. There's no way at all that a pool should be located on that sideline, especially the type of activity. There'll be, uh, lighting that'll go with it, there'll be activity at different times. It's just not the area for it. It just shouldn't be there. It's, uh, it's not what the nature of the neighborhood is, the nature of the north side, the nature of that particular neighborhood. The neighborhood's very desirable, that's why they bought there. Uh, everybody's putting a lot into their homes down there. It's, uh, a very nice place to live. It's very quiet. It's not a pool-type neighborhood. It's not a resort-type, uh, area. Um, it just really would impact very negatively on that sideline. And, um, I can only say, any hazard that you might think exists there was created. It was not pre-existing. It was not at all. Um.
Okay.
Nothing else, that's about it. I think we've covered it. Anything you want to say, Beth?
Yes, I'm concerned about, um, the front of their home, um, is within the floodplain. Um, it's, uh, also, I'm concerned about water table, and, um, where's the water gonna go? They've taken down all the trees that would absorb any kind of groundwater. Um, privacy, uh, tall grasses, four feet high, is not going to, uh, help me, sitting on my patio in the summertime, um, totally exposed to their windows that are up high. Um, I don't want to see what's going on in their backyard that is only 14 feet from, from my patio. Um, I've, we've had wonderful, quiet neighbors forever, 31 years, and, um, it just doesn't lend itself to, uh, to that. I am concerned about groundwater and, um, the conservation across the street, the floodplain, and, um, you have letters from three other neighbors in opposed, uh, in, in, in opposition to it, so, um, it doesn't belong there.
And any hardship that might be construed as existing was self-created?
Yeah, self-created hardship, self-imposed.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. and Mrs. Manning. I appreciate that. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, we do have, uh, someone on Zoom, Michelle Weston, who's raised their hand, and there's a Christopher Weston, who wrote a letter.
Uh, okay.
There on the other side.
Well, okay, let's, uh, let's, let's hear from them.
Good evening. My name is Chris Weston. I'm the trustee, and I represent my father. I think he's on, so I will let him talk, um, as, um, homeowners for four decades. And, does everyone hear me?
We hear you, but we're gonna hear from either you or your father, so who wants to speak?
Um, I guess I will speak. Um, Dad? I don't know if my father's on, but I'm gonna speak right now. Um, one of the, uh, there's a bunch of issues we have. Um, A, the size of the home that was put in, that's not at question, I understand that. Um, we are very concerned about the water table. Um, um, while we haven't had major water issues, we understand, you know, there's a reason why we all have crawl spaces. Um, that's gonna displace, um, the pool is gonna displace even more water than the septic as well. And, um, in, in reviewing the plans and discussing with some of my experts that I, um, pool people I know in the area, um, you know, the additional displacement of the water is, is, is problematic. Um, you know, we, we haven't had, seen, or, um, I haven't seen any, um, in, any environmental impacts to putting a pool in there. As far as I know, there's only two pools, and they're in the neighborhood, and they're very much higher water table. They're, they're, uh, uh, more south to, or, south to our property. We're at 11, I'm sorry, we're 11 Windswept directly next to the house. Um, we also had some, some concerns about the noise and light, and, um, in addition to the septic being less than 20 feet from the pool, um, and, um, you know, we feel that the, the, the lot is just too small to support that, um, size of a pool. It's a large pool, it's not a small pool. So, um, oh, and I wanted to say thank you, Dolores. I, I, I wrote my letter, in closing, I wrote my letter, and she posted it like five minutes later, so I was very impressed. Thank you.
Best. Okay, well, thank you very much, sir. Thank you. Okay, um, I do have one letter here from Thomas and Gail Care. They, uh, online, or would they like me to read the letter?
I don't believe they're online.
Okay, well, I'm gonna read their letter into the, uh, record. I have a letter dated, uh, December 30th, 2024, to the zoning board. First, let me thank you for taking on this important role for the town in the preservation of this historic community. I serve as well. I'm gonna move on, as in a butter, to the petitioner, number 5154, at 1 Windswept Path. My wife and I are fully opposed to the variance 203.5 to construct an in-ground swimming pool. Here are some issues and facts, uh, for you to consider, I'm sure. Distance from the septic system may not be at least 20 feet. Uh, distance from the residence may not meet the required distance of 10 feet. It's actually, uh, the 20 feet on the sideline setback. Distance from the body lines may not be sufficient, at least 15. They do have to be 20 and a half, or I believe, R40. Distance from the new protected fencing and apron may be too close to the main and butter on Shell Drive. Beyond these specific issues, we are concerned about additional night lighting and increased sound and noise. The water table is at fragile levels, and no information is provided as to the environmental impact of, on the grounds and neighbors. Removal of trees so critical to protecting the water table may impact neighbors adversely. Historic protections are in place for this area, and the impact of negating them to install pools seems to go against long-held practices and safeguards within the town. Sincerely, Thomas and Gail Care. There at 20 Whipple Will Lane. That's the extent of the correspondence that I have.
I believe there's, Sean, I think there's one more letter from Judith, I can't say the last name.
I think it's Will Chudsky. 23 Windswept.
Have we heard from them, either of these people? And what's her address?
23 Windswept.
23 Windswept, yeah.
And where is 23 Windswept in comparison to this property?
I think it's the one next to the Curves, I think.
Well, we've heard of three, we've heard from three of butters right now. Um.
Do you want me to read it, or?
Yeah, go ahead. Why don't you read that in, Jack?
Okay. Um, January 7th, 2025, Dear Yarmouth Zoning Board, I received a notice of a meeting at 1 Windswept Path concerning a swimming pool install. It is outside of the zoning bylaws, and an appeal hearing will be held on January 9th. I would like to ask the zoning board members if any of them have visited the site. All of Windswept Path borders, conservation land, and the Chase Garden Creek salt marsh. Many of the lots are also within flood zones. I feel that the disruption of land and drainage may have an adverse effect on the neighbors and conservation land abutting. On the designs, the septic system seems too close to the pool design and electrical. If the site is visited, you will see that the back exit to the yard may not have appropriate distance to the pool. The environmental impact to the neighbors and the land has not been discussed. Thank you for your time. Sincerely, Judith Wachowski.
Thank you, Jack. All right. Um, is there, and to the petitioner, is there anything that she would like to add, further add?
It's quite, uh, shocking that I have so much, uh, gathered, uh, probably pre, uh, you know, there's a lot of work been done together, uh, neighbors', attention to this and opposition to this, it looks like. Uh, I'm also shocked, because, uh, when we were constructing, we were renovating the house. We've been there for five years now. For the past year and a half, it's been slowly renovated. Uh, and, uh, almost every single neighbor, uh, other than, uh, maybe one or two, uh, that I haven't seen around, have congratulated us for bringing class, quality, and beauty, uh, back into, uh, the neighborhood by taking that old shack down and putting a very nice structure. And we have a similar structure to the end of our suite at, uh, on, on Windswept. If you look at it, we have a similar height structure. As a matter of fact, we, we end up with two stories rather than one story, and Mr. Manning has two stories right behind us. And we've never argued that they're, they're blocking our, uh, our view, uh, of the neighborhood. Uh, and as far as the trees are concerned, uh, Mr. Manning himself has several times come and asked me to cut some of those trees, because they were obstructing his view to the beach. And I, uh, hired a professional to cut those trees down, so I can open up the view, so he can have more access, uh, to see the beach. Uh, I was not planning on taking- I was not planning on taking those, some of those trees down, but I did it because he had asked, just for the record.
Okay, well, I, you know, sir, I, I, I don't think I'm hearing from the neighbors that they're opposed to the house that you put there. I think they're in support, and I think they all think that you did a good job over there. I think the only concern they have is the pool where it's gonna be located and how it may negatively impact them, because it's a little bit too close to their, their lot lines. And we get that a lot, okay? It's not, I don't think it's anything personal to you, I think, you know, maybe if it were reversed, you may have the same concerns yourself, so. I, I, it's nothing to you personally, and it certainly, I think, they speak in favor of your house. And I'm looking at your house right now on my computer, and it looks very nice. But they do have that concern. In terms of the pool apron, I think Mr. Manning is correct. I think you're gonna have to have a, an apron around that. You're also gonna need a fence around that. Now, I know you're talking about putting a power cover on, and we've run into this before, but we would require a four-foot fence around any pool.
Absolutely, yes, yeah.
The backyard is entirely fenced.
Pardon me?
Yeah, the back, all the backyard is entirely fenced, it's up to.
Well, you, you, you may get away with not putting an actual four-foot fence up, yeah.
It has a six-foot fence, actually.
I think you're gonna need an apron on that. So bottom line is, is you're gonna be about ten feet from their property line with your pool. And, and they've got some concerns about it. Well, I'll tell you what, why don't we, why don't we just go to the board here? Why don't we let the board have a discussion, and let's see what the members think? Unless there's anything else you want to add?
Well, one thing I would like to say is, that's six foot away from that corner from that pool. That is not a grounded foundation, this is just this lab for the garage. So there's no implications, I would say technically, we will be seventeen, eighteen foot away from that, the, the main building itself.
Well, we're just looking at the pool tonight.
I'm sorry?
We're just looking at where the pool's gonna be.
Yes, correct.
Yeah.
And the, uh, the other concern, someone bring that up, was the, you know, the water drainage and everything.
We're not, we're not really concerned with the water table, because we don't have that issue before us.
Yeah, exactly.
It'd be more of a board of health matter.
Yeah, I would just, I mean, pointed out this, I mean, it could be easily, you know, just do like a, a drain in there and just direct all the water, convert that to a, to a certain point.
Well, that, that, that's, that's another.
Another, yeah.
We're, we're just here right now, looking at, at your pool, we're not gonna get into the, because we don't have any evidence relative to drainage or lack of drainage.
Correct. And, and all this stockade fence goes on the, on the, all the corner of the property. And right now, it is open between the garage and the, and the neighbor. But of course, this after it's done, besides the automatic cover, ASTM certified, we're still gonna have like the fencing wrapping up, this whole backyard will be closed.
Shows it.
Right. Okay. Alright, well, we're gonna close it off to public comment, we're gonna go to the board for discussion. Who would like to begin a discussion on this matter? How about you, Jay? What are your thoughts?
It's been closed to the public, sorry. I'm not, I'm not comfortable with it being as close to the sideline, especially the fact that they're gonna need, I guess it's four feet, in addition to go around the back of the pool. I just think it's too close, and it doesn't, it doesn't really give enough, enough distance and buffer to, to the neighbors. So I'm, I'm uncomfortable with where it is right now.
Alright. And Dick, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, I think it, certainly nice to have a pool, I have one, and I miss not having one. But unfortunately, it just boils down to the fact that some sites aren't big enough, especially if you've got a big house on a relatively small lot, to try and squeeze a pool in there as well. It just ain't gonna, gonna work in this case, I think, under the circumstances, so. Sorry about that.
Okay. John?
Yeah, I'm, I'm usually not in favor of a pool so close to the sideline, the lot line. A pool is a place where people are gonna congregate, and, and there's gonna be noise, and perhaps a nuisance to the neighbors. Especially here, where we've had the three abutters in opposition to this project. So I'm gonna have a hard time supporting this.
Okay. Anthony, your thoughts?
I might just echo the same as everyone else, I wouldn't be able to vote for it. I don't think it meets the variance, in my opinion, the variance requirements.
And I'll just chime in as well, I, I agree with you, Anthony. I, I don't think they do meet the variance criteria. I don't think that it's owing to the shape, topography, or soil conditions. That may work against them, quite frankly. I, I, I don't see it as a hardship. When I'm hearing that they added a second garage door and blew out the, that side of the house, had they not done that, they might have been able to put that pool in as a matter of right, and they would have been that twenty feet off. So it's kind of a trade-off. As I think Mr. Manning pointed out, it would be a self-imposed hardship. I think he is correct in that. So I, I do think it is kind of close to that lot line. We do have to take the neighbors into consideration, as we would if it were in reverse, and one of the neighbors were asking for the same type of relief, then we would have the same problem based on opposition perhaps from our petitioner tonight. Should he have a problem with his neighbor putting a pool that was within those setbacks? So I, I wouldn't be able to support that as well. So, where's our IT guy? All my cameras just went out. There he is, okay, he's back. There we go. So, sir, you've heard the board, it doesn't appear that there's adequate support for you to get your variance. Now, we could take a vote, if you'd like, but I think you're gonna fail, and I think you're gonna fail on a five oh against. If you wanted to not have us take a vote, because if we vote against you, you can't come back for at least two years. If you wish to request that you withdraw your petition without prejudice, it means you do have the right to come back. I don't know that you would be successful if you came back, but that's your option, if you would like to do that. So we tend to offer that to petitioners, the option to withdraw their petition without prejudice. So we could either offer you that, or we could take a vote, if you want us to go forward.
I'll, I'll withdraw without prejudice.
You would like to withdraw without prejudice? Okay, well, is anybody prepared to make a motion so the petitioner could withdraw his petition without prejudice?
Yeah, so moved. Second.
About the second?
Second.
Second, is there any discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Hearing no, no opposition, that passes unanimously. Sir, your petition has been withdrawn without prejudice. We're sorry we couldn't help you tonight, and good luck with your house.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, that concludes the, I believe we have some minutes that we have to approve, Dolores?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from December twelfth.
Second.
Second to that?
Yeah, second.
Is that John?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye? Any other minutes, or is that it?
The other thing is, Sean, we have a, have a, an article here about organization and, and of, of the board going forward. And I, I think, I think I just kind of like to make a proposal to maybe table that until we're all in person.
Yes, I'd like to do that as well. I think we do have some business that we have to discuss. We have some vacancies on the board, and we do have to, also have to get into electing officers as well. So why don't we table that for future discussion? Perhaps we could talk about that at the end of February, if that would work for everybody?
Fine with me, yeah. I agree.
Okay. Alright, why don't we do that? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second on that one? No second, everybody wants to stay here?
All those in favor, yay.
Yes, okay, we stand adjourned, thank you very much, everybody.